It is 6:30, so I think we should get started. So I think the first thing is to review and approve the agenda. And I don't know of any changes that we need to make to the agenda in general. I know there's at least one thing we may have to do with the consent agenda, but we'll deal with that when we get there. Otherwise, I don't think there's any reason to change the order or take anything off. Anybody have information to suggest we should?
Nope.
Okay, great. Also, before we get going, I guess I just, this is my first meeting back after having a baby, and I am just thrilled to be back and to be here with you all. And, you know, certainly love being a mom so far, but, you know, it also like sharpens like, yeah, no, these are, there are things that are worth fighting for, for the future. And so it's just sharpened that for me, which is really good. And I guess that's my, my contribution to general business and appearances. So, general business and appearances, this is a time for any member of the public or the council to address the group on any topic that is otherwise not on our agenda. And so if you have something to say that is relevant to an agenda item, then you can say that adjacent to that item. But if it's not on the agenda, now is the, the right time to, to bring something up. And as with other comments that folks may make this evening, if you have something to say, if you would say your name and where you live, and try to keep your comments to about two minutes, that would be very helpful. And then also, however you, it would be, it would be really helpful if you would change your participation name, your name to whatever you, well, really to what your name is, so that we can have it for the public record, and also so that I can address you properly. So that is, I think I'll have to say about that. And I see we have one hand up already. If you have something to say, you can either use the raise hand icon, which is under reactions down at the bottom of the screen, and, or you can turn your video on and physically just wave, or you can turn your mic or unmute yourself and then just let us know that you would like to say something. So I think that is all I have to say. A lot of preamble there. Vicky Elaine, Vicky Elaine, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, I just had a question. The water leak or whatever that's down by Tractor Supply, there's been a lot of discussion about that amongst the various social pages and whatever. Is that, how bad is that? I mean, the road is pretty rough down there right now, but how bad is that leak? They've been trying to fix that for a while.
Don't have any, don't have info on that, but if Donna or someone can answer that, that would be great. If not, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
I don't have any update as of an hour or two ago. It's just been an ongoing situation. And we've also been out with multiple other water leaks. So staff has been dispersed across multiple challenges. But I will ask our team in the morning and get that information back to the mayor and to Bill. And we can post some clarifications on our social media.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, anyone else? Bill, if you are saying something, I, you're muted.
We got a note from Stephen Whitaker saying he was muted by the host and couldn't speak.
No, if you're on a phone, you can hit start.
I was muted and was unable to unmute, so I was trying to speak up.
Okay. Well, so Jean Leon has his hand up, so we'll, with Jean, and then, and then we'll go to you, Stephen. Go ahead, Jean.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I've had some concerns from, from public opinions. This limited public hearing via this virtual platform isn't, I mean, not everyone has the capability to, to meet this way. So I'm just wondering why, why isn't the city building open, at least with a camera, or if someone can't, can't attend, or doesn't have the internet, doesn't have a phone? Why has this been so restricted and limited to virtual worlds? It's a question.
Thank you. I don't know if anyone from council would like to respond to that. I mean, I can respond generally, but go ahead, Donna.
Well, I mean, I'll just respond that when cases of the virus has gone up to the point that things are more contagious, that indeed I didn't want to come to the city council meeting live. And it was also very difficult with the mask. And to ask staff to be there if I didn't want to be there, when indeed the legislators voted to allow remote meetings, they themselves are meeting remotely. So it just, it seemed to make sense.
No, I'm sorry, it doesn't make sense for, to people who don't have that access.
Hey, Jean, this is not a time for responses, but thank you.
My concern about, I guess, my health, and also there were other council members who had issues with masks. It was really hard to function, and so they were one of those exceptions of health. And I felt it was more important to allow all of us to have more freedom to talk right now than, than live. We did have all our public hearings live, but that for at least the month of February, we were going to go remote, assess the data of where the virus was, and then make other decisions for March.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for the question. All right, and Stephen, go ahead.
I want to second the, I don't have Zoom access, limited to telephone. I was locked out when I first tried to speak up. This is not adequate for public participation. The virus counts are falling, schools are relaxing, max mandates, et cetera. So the excuse doesn't fly. And we even have the immediately prior council member taking votes by email to shut me out of tomorrow night's CVPSA meeting similarly. And it's just, it's just outrageous. But I want to raise a couple of other things. The water leak's been going on for five days down on East State Street, flooding that storm drain. And there's just, you know, people put out cones and then don't move, don't go in there to fix it for several days. Meanwhile, the snow that piled up last Friday has still not been cleared from the very precious parking places on School Street. You know, we've got glazed ice sidewalks. We're really, you know, to manage or mismanage the, the snow cleanup while we've asked all of our citizens to park elsewhere at night so that this clearing could happen, and then not do the clearing is really outrageous. You know, it's an exploitation of, of the power of the city. And you're ripping off the public who's paying for this service. So I want to raise that, but I also want to raise a significant, I learned that the city manager and others have been aware that there's million dollars, millions of dollars in road improvements necessary to use the new parcel that is being proposed on a bond. And that has not been warned, you know? So to ask the city, the city voters for $2 million bond and not disclose that there's an additional millions required to make that property useful by building a new road is, I think, a gross violation of the state law regarding bond and bond warnings. And I think y'all ought to take it really seriously, having just learned how expensive litigation can be in delays and in, in costs. So I just think that, this is just another example, which I will speak later in the meeting, about city mismanagement. But this one, the council should sit up and take real notice. Was information known and withheld from the public regarding the cost of developing that property? Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Bill.
Just for the record, I had no information about the cost of the road. It's a city road, it's used, it's in use. So I don't know where Mr. Whitaker is getting his numbers or where he alleges. I knew something that I don't know. I have zero information about that. And certainly, if we had hard numbers, we would share them. So I, I have to believe he's making this up.
Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Is he making up?
All right, and is there anyone else?
Hello?
DeAnthony Butternut, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I like just don't, what were we talking about?
I will, DeAnthony, look at mine.
You're my P D.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I think we're being.
You're being so bad, yeah.
I'm so confused, man. All right, I'm just gonna leave, I'm sorry.
It's a glazio.
Cameron, do you have the capacity to?
Regular city council meeting, y'all. Can I, can I get my idea? Can I get my presentation?
So Cameron, do you have the capacity to mute people?
I'm working on it, I promise.
Okay, oh, I believe you.
I apologize. I think I got everyone? No, not that guy. Okay, I think we might be okay. I will continue to monitor that. Apologize. It's what happens when we try not to put a lot of passwords or make more barriers to get on these meetings. And so sometimes that can happen. I apologize, and I'm glad nothing worse showed up. Okay, now you should be able to unmute.
Okay, oh, thank you.
If we see somebody pop in that we think is gonna do that, how can we let you know?
Hey, so, so Vicky, even, even now, so we're just hoping for people not to, to talk out of turn.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
Because, because I saw those two people.
Yeah, fair enough. It's a good, it's a good question, but in an attempt to keep like some order, that would be good. I, I think you should probably just send Cameron an email. Cameron, does that sound all right?
That is fine, thank you. I will be definitely making sure people are behaving on the call.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else have a comment they would like to make? Okay, all right, so we are gonna move on.
I had my hand raised, Mayor.
Yes, you've already had your.
I didn't get to finish because I was cut off and muted.
Okay, so just so you know, Jean, the way we usually run it is that you, like, and so that's fine. You can have your, you know, we can go back to you, that's fine. But for the future, we usually go with it so that like, if you have a comment, you say all of your, your questions sort of together.
I was muted.
And so, so you say all of your questions together, and then when you're done, then we'll answer them. So it's not like a back and forth. So just so you know, that's, that's how we generally run this.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you guys role, and that's why you just got hacked in this virtual.
So go ahead, Jean, now's, now's an okay time, go ahead.
Good, so look what just happened. You guys got hacked, some intrusive behavior. Here we go again. I mean, this platform just doesn't work for everybody.
Your mom doesn't work in bed after I check.
Hello, I have a question.
Something's happening again.
Just keep talking, I promise I'm fixing it.
Okay, so I just wanted to make a note from a, kind of a, a public collective request on, and a suggestion, and a highly recommending that the council to review the city manager's contract, be thoroughly examined, and, and it's, it's suggested that it be reviewed and examined with an independent attorney before agreeing or signing to any contract.
Jean, I'm gonna interrupt you. If you have a comment that is pertinent to one of our agenda items, then you can make that comment then.
Oh, right on, thank you.
Yes, okay. No worries, no worries, it's all good. General Business and Appearances is for comments that are on items that are not related to our agenda. But, but fair, fair, we want to hear what you have to say.
I just, I'm, unfortunately, I have another meeting, so I just thought I'd say, I just make such suggestion now.
Sorry, I'm sorry to have interrupted you. Since you have to go to another meeting, anything further you want to say about that? I, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just, it's, it's to just thoroughly examine and review, you know, and it's, and it's highly suggested and recommended that it be reviewed with an independent attorney rather, or, you know, at least extending the period of time to, to undergo such review. That's all I was saying, and it was like kind of a, into a collective public request from, from, you know, people in neighborhoods and in our community. Anyway, thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so I'm not seeing any other hands at this point. So we are gonna move on to the consent agenda. Is there, I know, yes, Jack, go ahead.
Move the consent agenda.
Before we do that, actually, there was a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, and Jay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to recuse myself from item E from the consent agenda, which is the approval of the proposal for the Hubbard Park Trail. The company is a client of mine, and there's nothing necessarily in place right now, but it could potentially be that I would do some work for them down the road on this project. So I just want to, I don't know if we need to separate that out from the consent agenda so that I'm not part of it, but that's, I just want to make sure I'm recused from that vote. Thanks.
So Jack and Connor, okay with you if it's, if you're, if it's a sort of friendly amendment? Okay, great, excellent. Okay, so we have a motion and a second regarding the consent agenda minus part E. Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Okay, and is there a motion regarding item E?
I'll make a motion that we pass. The, I should get the wording off the agenda, that we, that we award the, the bid to Timberland and Stone to do the ADA transition plan for our trails.
Second. There a second? Okay, there's a second, any further discussion?
That's Timber and Stone.
Timber and Stone, I'm sorry, does not say that right. I loved all the pictures. It was, it was great to go through this proposal.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Okay, so that passes, and so we are up to some appointments. So we have this new committee forming, the Stormwater Utility Committee, and a sort of a slate of folks to be appointed there, though to be fair, some of those are, those folks are us. And I think, and so there's members from the Tree Board and friends of Lusinski, and one at-large member of the public, and I don't see Jim Condos here with us. I, I figure we could probably do both of the appointments together. The other appointment is for Hanif Nazr Ali to the Montpelier Transportation Infrastructure Committee. So is there, and I don't see Hanif here either. So is there a motion regarding these appointments? Or, yeah? Jack, go ahead.
I move that we appoint all of the candidates without going into executive session.
Donna, okay, motion and a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 And opposed. All right, and so, thank you. I know they're not here, but very grateful for, for everybody's participation in these, these committees and these groups. Really important and exciting work, so very grateful. All right, so now I think we have a presentation from the Community Justice Center. And so I see Carol Plant here. I don't know if there's anybody else, but Carol, I'll turn it over to you.
Awesome, thank you. Yeah, as far as I can tell, I'm the only, the only one here tonight. I invited the staff, but they were reluctant. So I first want to say I'm really grateful to be here, happy to be able to talk about the Justice Center with you and give you an update. I started right when COVID shut the state down, and it's been a really interesting two years of like learning the job and learning the city, because I don't live in Montpelier. So I'm really happy to be able to give you an update on where we're at right now and talk about, you know, some things that are pertinent to the Justice Center right now. I am gonna share my presentation, so Cameron, if you can just allow me to share my presentation. And I know that I need to do something to be able to get it to remove that sidebar. Hold on just a second.
Run it as a normal slideshow, Carol, so just click slideshow and then from beginning.
Okay, I'm, yeah, having trouble finding where slideshow is.
To the left. On the top banner, where the file is, almost to the, all the way to the right.
Yep.
Other way. There you go.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you for that. So I am not, not the most technological person, I will say that. So again, you know, I appreciate being here, and I want to start off by just telling you a little bit about our staff. So I'm the director. Alfred has been with us for 11 years as the reentry specialist. So he does our, our reentry program and our transitional housing. Erin Anderson was hired in September of 2020, and she replaced me, who had replaced Judy as the restorative programs coordinator. So she does all the panels. And then Pat Hoffman, Pat actually started out as a volunteer doing our COSA program years ago. And then she started doing calls to help out when calling people who were victims of crime and reaching out to them, even if there wasn't gonna be an official charge. So she, and that job turned into a 12-hour-a-week position as our outreach specialist. So we have a 12-member community advisory board. Right now, we're meeting once a month because in this two-year transition period, we had a lot of attrition, which I think was really natural. People had a relationship with Yvonne and other folks at the Justice Center. So we've had quite a bit of attrition, but we have a really strong board, and we're meeting once, once a month right now, instead of once a quarter, as the group forms and figures out what they, what they, their roles really are and what they want to prioritize based on our strategic plan. We have one member who is under 21, which is, our goal is to have at least two who represent that age group. We have a total of, right now, 34 panel volunteers and 30 COSA volunteers. So we have a really robust volunteer group in Montpelier. And one of the things I have to say about that is that people frequently are reaching out to us to, because they want to volunteer, they just hear about us, they, they seem to understand that we're doing really good work, even before they get to know who we are and, and want to volunteer. So we're not having to do a lot of recruitment, although one of the areas that we do want to do some recruitment is to be more diverse and have better representation of our BIPOC community. Just to give you a little bit about the restorative programs, we do 10 to 12 panels a month, and, and in addition to that, we do one or two youth panels. We have a specific group of youth of between ages of 14 and 21. And so they mostly see, they only see pre-charge cases, and they see just youth, youth cases. So that's a really busy program. The outreach to affected parties, it includes work that, where there are people in a restorative justice panel case who've been impacted by crime. So Pat does outreach to those people and gives them options for whether and how they want to participate. And it's all about giving them voice and keeping uppermost in our mind what they want and need as, as reparations and resolution for what happened to them. And then she does direct outreach to affected parties, like I was saying, where there's no criminal charge. And we do that in partnership with Montpelier Police Department, where we have access to the records in their system, and she can make phone calls to folks and, and just, and mostly she will tell you that they just want to be able to tell their story about what happened. And if there's not gonna be a charge, and there's not gonna be any formal restitution or a court case, they just feel like somebody actually heard them, which is really important. And I think that's a really impactful program for Montpelier Police Department. The Conflict Assistance Program is basically mediation facilitation program and coaching around conflict. And I manage all of those cases. Occasionally, we'll hire out an outside mediator. If, if it's just too overwhelming, or if I feel like there's any kind of conflict of interest for me, then, then I'll do that. We were pretty busy last year with those cases, not so much this year. We've only had a few of those. I include in that also when I get contacted by, for example, one, a couple of the schools last year had some staff conflicts, and so I came in and I did some mediation between staff at the schools. So the reentry program is our circles of support and accountability. And that program, we use three to five volunteers. They meet with people who are, who want this kind of support, people who are coming out of jail, who want some extra support so that they can stay on track with, and, and they have a laundry list of conditions usually that they need to keep up with, including taking care of themselves, which is finding housing and getting a job, maybe repairing relationships with family and friends, making reparations in some way. And then Navigation Services is people who are on probation, who need a little bit extra, of extra support, but not necessarily the full COSA team. So Alfred does all of that work. In addition to our transitional housing program, we lease two single occupancy apartments, and we have people generally in there all the time. And they, they stay between typically three and six months while they're getting on their feet and getting a job and, you know, getting, getting themselves settled as they come out of incarceration. We also provide rental assistance to people who come out of jail and maybe have a job right away, and they, but they don't have enough money, for example, for a security deposit. So we help them, may help them find their own apartment and have their own lease and provide some assistance with them as they get going again. We also do community forums and education. Right now, we have scheduled Insights and Insights into Conflict, two-hour, hour and a half, two-hour program for the senior. for the senior center that's going to be coming up in March. And then we do also training and recruitment. So the training, we have standards that we have to meet for the Department of Corrections for all of our volunteers, except for CAB members. And then we do ongoing training as well with our volunteers based on what they want and need for training. So just some of the statistics. And I checked in, I, I didn't include 2019, but I did check on the data today just to see where, where we were at in terms of the numbers. And, and really we're, in 2020, we really took a dive in, in getting cases. We didn't have a lot of referrals because police were not policing so much when the state was shut down. And then the courts shut down for a long time. So there weren't, cases weren't being adjudicated. So people weren't going on to probation. And so we were getting fewer referrals and then it started to pick up. And so we really are not too far behind where we were in 2019. Right now, in 2020, things are a little bit slower and this is a typical, I've, I've, this is my 15th year doing this work between being here and in Hardwick for 13 years and and, and the referrals really do ebb and flow. And we, so you can see a year where referrals are fairly low and then the next year it will pick back up. So there's not a lot of logic to it necessarily. It's how, how crime might be happening in the community and other circumstances that are way beyond our control. So the affected outreach for the panels, that's a really important figure right there. So, you know, there were 59, I believe that number, that's 59 cases where there were people who were affected by crime, who were contacted and participated in our program, which is really significant because we want people in the community to feel like they have a way to have a voice in how a, an incident is resolved. And we know that when they go to court, there may be a victim's advocate that gets assigned to them, but they have very little say over how the case goes. Also, the direct outreach that, that Pat did, a really significant number. So in 2021, 274 people. So far, she's connected with 92 people. And there was a glitch in the, over the summer where there was a couple of months where we didn't have access to the system. So she feels like she's probably going to be catching up with that. And then when you look at our volunteer hours, the volunteer hours in 19 were 655. So we any, we range anywhere in, in this figure for the panel programs. The reentry program, again, steady with our transitional housing. The COSA program, we, we had seven new in 2020, five new in 21, and the figures in parentheses are the total amount that we served. This year, 22, we have, we've had fewer referrals. And part of, part of the reason that we have fewer referrals or we're working with fewer people is for one reason is because we don't have housing stock to put people in when they're coming directly out of jail. And then people are having more trouble finding their own apartment because of the issues around housing right now. So hopefully that's going to turn around. We keep an eye on that and we think a lot about that, how we can best serve people. But that's a significant problem too, because we have fewer cases in the transitional housing and everyone in our transitional housing also has a COSA team. So, so the numbers are a little bit lower in terms of the volunteer hours right now, which is a good gauge to, to base, to base what's happening in that program. So I, I meant to say this at the beginning too. So if anybody has a question, you want to interrupt me, feel free to, to do that. Otherwise, I'm open to any questions at the end. So current projects, I'm resurrecting the Parenting with Respect class that Yvonne had developed. We're hoping to begin that at the end of the month and we're working with one of our referring agencies, which is the Department for Children and Families, potentially for financial support. That's a program where we don't charge the participants because we want to make sure it's available to them. Alfred participates in the Achieving Change Through Values-Based Behavior. That's another program that Yvonne was involved in. She took that program with her and operates that on her own. And so he's still in, Alfred is still involved in that, which is really helpful. There is a new program where we're doing, it's called Graduated Sanctions. It's basically to help keep people who are on probation from having a violation of their probation. So it's a restorative process so that they don't have a court, a court hearing around a violation and end up going back to jail. So that's really just a restorative justice panel. It's a little bit modified from our regular panel. We're working with Northfield Middle and High School right now. We have a contract with them for six hours a week and Erin goes to the school and she is doing case, cases with students. And she's also working with their lead person there on systematizing their practices at the school.
Excuse me. Could, could you give an example like of what kind of issue they'd be dealing with at the school?
You know, that's, I don't know what she has had recently, but my guess is it is likely it's potentially something like bullying and before it rises to the level of harassment, they will also use it. If somebody has a more serious infraction, they will use it as a way for them to be able to return to school after potentially having a suspension. So there's a couple of different ways that, that it gets used at the schools. That's a good question. I can follow up with Erin and get some more specifics about those cases.
It just makes it more tangible in my mind. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. So we're also, also now negotiating with Hardwood Union regarding direct referrals. So, so we've had a few meetings with them and they have been sending, they've sent six or eight cases to us in the last several months. And so because they're out of our district, we don't, we don't support them for free. So we're working on what that relationship looks like. And so we'll have a little bit of income from processing those cases. We were also contacted by Rory Tebow because he is interested in, in addressing equity issues for the BIPOC community. And he suggested a pilot project that he was kind of unclear about what he wanted, but he, he, he wants a way to make sure that our, our COSA teams and our restorative panels are more diverse. And so, you know, we're already working on that and also cognizant of the fact that we don't want to overstress the people of color in our community by asking them to do too much. So, you know, we've come up with a couple of ideas about acknowledging that there are disparities and then working toward making sure that we can offer people, if we have a person of color coming into our programs, that we will do our best to make it a more, a more appropriate and a more comfortable situation for them in terms of representation on their team. Let's see what's next here. So always we're, you know, working with Montpelier Police Department. We have a great relationship with the police. We get lots of referrals. And we learn from each other all the time. We've had some new, the new officers that are, that have come on. We've had one-on-one meetings with them so we can explain our programs. And we really, with all of them, just want to stay uppermost in their minds so that they'll ready to do the direct referrals to our program. So these pre-charge referrals are a real opportunity, especially for first-time offenders, to not have any, any connection with the criminal legal system. So if the case doesn't even go to the state's attorney's office, it's, it's a really different opportunity than if it goes to the state's attorney where when it goes to court diversion, there actually is a charge. So it's, so diversion is not pre-charge. It's pre-adjudication, but not pre-charge. So we have a relationship with Northfield and Berlin also send us referrals. And in the last couple of years, Vermont State Police is doing referrals into our program, which is, for me, was really significant because I tried for several years in my previous job to have a relationship with Vermont State Police because it's a lot of coverage in Caledonia and Orleans County where I worked and that didn't go anywhere. So this is great. Strengthening our partnerships with the city departments, we do get referrals from a couple of our other departments. The Planning Department occasionally will send referrals to our Conflict Assistance Program, which is fantastic. I've offered to just help people really understand how to, what a sort of conversation could look like so that all of our city staff will feel like they can resolve issues before they get bigger. So that's something that Tanya and I have, have to do, have a little more conversation about, but something that is important. My goal is that the city be considered a restorative city. The Montpelier Ruxbury School District and other area schools, like I said before, we, you know, we have contact with them. They've been looking to us to help them with establishing restorative practices. And that's at all different, different places right now for, for different schools and different districts. And we also train youth panel volunteers. We recruit and train youth panel volunteers that they can then take the training that they've learned for our community panels and bring it back to their school. We are always working on our outreach through events and marketing. We are required to do two community forums every year. One of them is going to be the, the MSAC Insights into Conflict. We haven't quite decided what the second one is going to be yet, but it'll be something this spring. And then for marketing, one of our ideas is to post on Front Porch Forum some topics around restorative justice so that people remember what we do and, and how we do it and why we do it. Because we're in the legislative session right now, there are a few things that are important to us. That right now, there is a midpoint probation review that would target early release for probationers and this could affect our graduated sanctions referrals. So we're just keeping an eye on that. We don't have any objection to it. There's also a bill to remove exclusionary language that would then allow community justice centers to process domestic and sexual violence cases. Right now, it is in-state statute that we cannot do those cases. There would need to be a lot of work around training and figuring out the most appropriate process if we were going to start doing those cases. That being said, sometimes through our process, we do, and our reentry folks, there, there are often times where we work with sex offenders and we work with people who have committed domestic violence. Outside of that, with our panels, we would really need to have a process that was going to be safe. And so, so there, there's concern around that one going through and not having everything in place and, and not, we want to make sure that it's safe for the people who've been affected. There's a talk about an overall review of the, all of the organizations that provide restorative services around the state. And from my understanding, a study group has been formed, I believe in the House. And then CJC directors, just so you know, we meet once a month, all of us from around the state and talk about what's important to us, how we do our work. We do education together. We provide restorative justice panel training together. And we decided that because we have been level funded, I think Montpelier has been level funded for at least 10 or 12 years with our base grant. We decided as a group, we had consensus that we wanted to ask for a 5% increase for cost of living expenses and to support full-time benefited positions. Whether or not that'll go anywhere, I don't know. It's really going to be up to appropriations to decide how they're going to fund the DOC and then the DOC is going to decide what they provide for us. I did hear last week, we're hopeful that we will at least be level funded for, for fiscal year '23. There is a need for updating the statutory language right now. Restorative justice centers are mentioned in a few different, in a few different laws and it is not up to date. So there's some old language in there. The other thing that, that is really, really important to me and to some of the other directors is that we need an entity or a support structure to represent the CJC. It's not just with the legislature, but in general. And my thinking about that is, you know, what this organi, we had this organization for a while. It was called the Community Justice Network of Vermont. Our funding from the Department of Corrections was removed, I think in 2018, 17 or 18. So we haven't had that organizing body. And we had an executive director who was able to really organize us and keep us organized and we met regularly and we really felt like this was an avenue for us to advance restorative practices and how we do it and to bring equity from, from one county to the next and one justice center to the next. So I'm, I'm advocating for that. I, but we don't have the funding for it right now. So that's another thing that I have been asking for and have mentioned to my colleagues and I know there are others who want that too. We're just not sure how that might happen. What could happen if that existed was we potentially could end up with a statewide database, again, bring equity statewide. Could be an, an avenue for grant seeking and more volunteer and staff development opportunities, which would be fantastic. And then lastly, support from municipally-based community justice centers. There are only a, a few of us that are left that are based in municipalities. And the reason that this is important and I'm bringing it up is because in, in December of 2019, before I started in this job, there was a community advisory board meeting that the Department of Corrections attended. And what they suggested at that meeting was that the Berry Justice Center and the Court Diversion Office in Washington County and the Montpelier Justice Center should get together and figure out a way to become one nonprofit. That would be the point, the point, one point to collect all of the referrals for all of the work, all of the money and all of the referrals would, referrals would go to one place. So it does exist in six, five, in five centers in five counties around the state. But otherwise, the, the programs are, are kind of scattered with different agencies. So it's, it's fairly complex. But there are lots of good reasons to maintain the municipally-based community justice center. What I see in Montpelier in comparison to, to where I've worked before is that the Justice Center is so, is really truly embedded in the city, in city government and in the city. I mean, people really value and, and appreciate what we do. They understand what we do. And there would be lots of, lots of negative consequences, I think. And in part because most of our work is, is actually done by the volunteers who live in the towns that we serve. I, I think we would, I, I think we would lose a lot of the the flavor and the, the intent behind what we do, which is to, to reconnect people in their community. And I think that's a really important piece of what we do is to help people really feel like they belong even after they've committed an infraction. So that was a lot. I know I could say a lot more. If, if you know me, I could talk all day and, and night about restorative justice, but I'm open to any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Carol. Any comments or questions from council? Okay, Donna.
Carol, I guess two things. One is you use the term panels a lot. Could you sort of describe what the panel actually does?
Sure. It's between three and five community volunteers who they're trained in restorative justice process and they meet with the person who's committed an offense and who has been referred to us. And they basically cover four points in a community panel meeting. They want to deepen the understanding of the harm. They help identify who's been affected and how they've been affected. They help a person reengage with their community. And then they also look for ways to have a plan for this person to do something different so that they don't re-offend. They come up with an agreement together and that, everybody signs off on the agreement and everyone who's in the room gets to participate in creating that agreement, including the person who had the offense. So it's a, it's a pretty egalitarian process. Everyone gets to contribute. It's really transparent. And then that person comes back after a couple of months. And if all of the tasks on their agreement are completed, they complete the process successfully.
And the others were the initials, C O S A, COSA?
Yeah, COSA. That's the Circles of Support and Accountability.
Okay, it's an abbreviation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, Carol, I just want to say I served on a COSA panel pretty recently. And want to give a big shout out to Alfred Unstaf there. Like, talk about a guy who like, it's more than just a job for him. Like the cell phone's always on and he, he's making a real difference in people's lives. And just want to, just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. I really appreciate hearing that. And I know that, I, I will say that the people, the people that I know who are really into this work, we're all really passionate about what we do. And, and personally, I feel like even our volunteers, like our volunteers change because of the way that they do the work. They really understand that they, they need to come to this with an open mind and an open heart and to recognize the people that they're working with as their neighbors and their, you know, people who live in their community. So really, the engagement piece and helping people come back to feeling like they belong is, is a really important component of that. And yes, Alfred is on top of it.
Donna, go ahead.
Only if there's nobody else. I, I just have a personal story. When the car hit me in the crosswalk in, in Montpelier in 2016, I was so surprised when someone from your department, Pat, called me. I was like, I mean, literally, I mean, it was, you're so alone with dealing with it. And to have somebody call you and be concerned about you as a victim was awesome. And we never got the driver to ever meet with me, talk to me or anything. But that was really very, very meaningful. And I do wish we could have used your services. I think it would have helped me a lot. So I'm glad you're there.
I think that's a, that's a pretty typical response of the people who, who participate as, as someone who's been affected. They really appreciate that opportunity. You know, again, in the court system, they may or may not have an opportunity to ask the questions, the unanswered questions through the court process. They want to, mostly they want to know why and if it was personal. And, and they want to have a say in, in what this person needs to do to make reparations to them.
Okay, we also would take comments or questions from the public. Any, any questions or comments from other folks?
Yeah, Steve Whitaker.
Go ahead, Stephen.
I just want to caution, first off, my radar goes up when we think about spinning off nonprofits because the transparency goes away when you're not obligated by public records law. But I also, I've done a lot of work advocacy, you know, over the Gerton Park problem and solution, which is now worse, by the way. And I was assaulted by one of the frequent flyers down there. And I was told by the officer who took the report that it was referred to restorative justice, but I never heard a peep, you know? And the guy's still carrying on his same belligerent behavior around town. He's one of the chronic problem people, you know, which might have been healed had he had a safe place to stay overnight. But I just want to caution that this, you know, you hear a lot of, you know, great stuff, but when restorative justice ignores the victim of the crime, you know? And it's, it's a, you know, not to put all the history of this town's mismanagement and police corruption on the restorative justice center, but I really do feel that my experience is not consistent with what you're hearing.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate your comment about that. I can't speak to why that might be. There are, there are times when we don't get the referral, even if, even if you were told that it was going to go in that direction. If a person is not willing to work with us, then we won't get the referral. And it, and it also, you know, the, I mean, there are hundreds of cases that, hundreds of calls that Pat looks at every month. And she has to also pick and choose who she can call. Like I said, she works 12 hours a week, so there's only so much she can do. And this is another request that we had with, with the Department of Corrections, was actually to be able to have a full-time benefited position to do the work that Pat does at every justice center. And we doubt that that's going to happen because that was going to be about a million dollars more to, to the justice centers. But if we had a full-time position as opposed to 12 hours a week, there'd be more opportunity to make those outreach calls. So I'm sorry that that didn't happen for you, Steve. I, I don't know why, but.
No, that, that's a good explanation. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
All right, anyone else? Okay, all right, well, Vicky, Vicky and Lane, go ahead.
I just wanted to, somewhat, but not totally, my experience with the community justice center was not all that positive either. But that's the way it was. I mean, the person was not, was not, did not respond, did not care or did not respond to any of the, of the communications from the community justice system. But that's the way it goes sometimes.
There are definitely people who are not ready to, to be accountable and accept responsibility for the decisions that led them to harming someone else. So we, you know, we can't really change that. If they, if they don't respond and they're not willing to work with us, then our hands are tied. We can't force them to do that. And it wouldn't work if we tried to force, force them to do that.
Yeah, that makes sense. And I think it's really helpful to know how your processes work. And that it's sort of, in, in order for some of these processes to even happen, it has to kind of be a two-way street and not always the case. I also just want to express my gratitude to you all. I think you all do just really wonderful work and to really appreciate everything that, that you and the whole department does. So please pass that along to, to them for us.
I will. Thank you.
Great, all right. And so moving on then, unless there's other questions from, from council or comments from council. Okay, all right. So moving on to the Police Review Committee follow-up. And I think I saw Alyssa on here. Oh, and, and Chief Pete is on as well. Great. Bill, go ahead.
Just quickly to tee this up while people are getting on, when, when we last had the presentation from the Police Review Committee, the council had asked, and I think the committee had asked, that we revisit again in a few months to see where things were and kind of get an update. So that's what this was. We scheduled this for February and I think, I know the chief has, was going to do a run-through and I don't know if Alyssa's planning to do anything or not.
Okay, well, I will turn it over to either you, Alyssa or Chief Pete. Oh, I think, yeah, okay, go ahead.
Sorry, good evening, Mayor, Honorable Members of the City Council and City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Brian Peet with the Montpelier Police Department. I can go through the slide presentation and, and pause any slides. Alyssa, if you'd like to speak to them more, if you'd like to go first or before, your call.
I think it'd be great if you could go, Chief Pete. And I did, I have been kind of going through and listing out some questions for you and I wasn't sure how we should deal with that. But I'm happy to, you know, wait to the end and then go, why don't I wait to the end so you can talk unless you're at a pause point and then, then I'll jump in.
Sure, okay. Then I'll go ahead and share my screen and then move to, to, to start on the PowerPoint presentation. Can folks see everything okay?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, again, my name is Brian Peet. I'm with the Montpelier, I'm the Chief of Police for the Montpelier Police Department. And tonight, just going to provide you with a summary update of all of the, the, the action items that the police department has been involved in. What this slideshow is going to be is just going to be a regurgitation of the previous slide presentation, but the updates will be marked in purple for easy reading and easy discussion. So this was the, the summer, the first introduction slide of, of all the items that we were going to discuss. And then this was the, the, the second slide for that. What I want to call attention to is everything that was circled in red were items that we had or that we were going to have discussions about. But for the next slide, for right here where it says, "City does not support" when we circle officer misconduct or internal affairs, that's, it kind of doesn't read too well. We do very much support transparency and accountability with, with misconduct and internal affairs. But it was more appropriate to move that to talk about the spirit of recommendation and flagging the challenges that, that come with, per se, a civilian review committee and how that discussion should pan out. So that's where we need more direction or more conversation regarding that. Otherwise, everything else is the same. So in moving forward, what we, what we're looking at here on this particular slide is for, for any time that we have a significant incident, an officer-involved shooting or something where, where there's a significant use of force incident that the PRC has recommended that we, that, that there, there be some way of putting more information out to the public and then helping the public digest the information, ask questions and, and look at the accountability process and the healing processes as well. So the Police Review Committee has agreed to assist us in developing what that protocol might look like. I also wanted to note that the Montpelier Police Department is about to implement Chaplain Program and which we're reaching out to leaders in, in our faith-based community to see if they would come aboard and then provide counseling and comfort to those who may want it when, when we're responding to, to traumatic calls for service or even for the officers, staff members and their families when they might need another outlet in regarding to some of the things they may be struggling with at work. The second bullet point there, that update, is that we have, that our CRO, Corporal Philbrick, has completed the IS-29. That's the Public Information Officer's Awareness Course. But he needs a follow-up course and that's the advanced course. So we are still moving ahead as far as how we're disseminating and how we're professionalizing the way we disseminate information to the public based on best practices and what other agencies are doing and doing well. But as a note, because of our staffing situation, Corporal Philbrick has not been able to fully devote his time to the CRO, which is quite honestly a, a, a full-time job even more than that. So he's dividing his time working the streets and then covering other shifts that we can't cover and then coming in and hanging and, and handling these administrative lifts or making, building these bridges with the community in between calls. So in looking at deep militarization, the 1033 program, to update that, what our recommendation is and, is that if we're more than likely not going to look for anything from the 1033 program. We have not used it in years. I don't foresee us doing it unless there is something out there. The only thing that we may consider might be things like helmets or body, or body armor. But traditionally, when those things are offered through the 1033 program, they're often expired, so they're, they're no good for us. Or when we look at things like storage containers or like Conex boxes, places that we can store some stuff outside because we have limited room in the, in the, the department and office supplies. But again, I don't see us doing office supplies because state has a surplus shop 10 miles up the road. So we don't intend to, to purchase any vehicles, weapons, less than lethal items, anything else to that effect. But if we did want to seek something out for the 1033 program, we're thinking that it's going to be best prudent to reach out to Cameron and Bill, let them know which items we'd like to get and then have that brought to the city con, to the city council for any discussion. And looking at street outreach training, we have our annual CPR training that's going to be scheduled in the first week of March, the first few weeks of March. We're going to incorporate the recommended training regarding deescalations and, and, and looking at what signs of intoxication may be or, you know, if, if someone drank, drank too much or if someone has used another intoxicating substance, drugs, what those physical signs are, what the, and, and how that affects through the body and, and, and how it can be treated to those things. So we're going to incorporate that with our annual CPR training. And we'll, of course, send the invitation out to our outreach partners in the CJC if they'd like to attend this block, which is something that they had requested during the, the PRC process. So training with youth and adolescent behavior, the, the recommendation from the PRC here was to look at cognitive development and how it works in juveniles, how it works in children. So we've reached out to Prevent Child Abuse Vermont, which is right up the hill near the, near the Elks Lodge. And they're working to develop a specific course for us based on child and adolescent brain development. They're also going to talk about other topics such as how, how that development and how that physical development relates to sexuality in children and teens. I do know that there will be a cost. The cost is going to be about $500 per class. They're not, they're going to be unable to do one class for us and we record it. And then all the officers are trained in it. It's going to have to be paired out throughout a variety of days to get day shifts, afternoon shift, and then the officers who are coming in on, on different days. So we're going to, it's going to take several courses to get that training done. My estimation is anywhere between three to four. For crowd control, so what we're learning as we're talking more about crowd control, it's actually crowd management. Crowd control is when it gets to the point that we can't, that, that the situation is beyond control. So we're looking at it more from a proactive standpoint. So we're going to end up, initially, we thought the training was going to possibly run anywhere between $10,000 to $15,000. And then we were going to try to get a grant for that. But we found a, a good training opportunity and we're going to send Deputy Chief Norenson and Sergeant Moulton to training in Florida, which is literally next month, I believe. And they're going to be trained on crowd management techniques in preparing for no-notice things or things that, that are, are scheduled and how we can make sure we, we work to de-escalate situations and start compromising situations from occurring in the first place. So that training will be, those, the chief and the sergeant will bring that training back to the department and we will continue that training in-house. And that estimated cost is going to be $3,000 that will be taken out of our training budget. So for scenario-based training, this is the previous slide. It's pretty lengthy, but you guys are already aware of it. The updates are on the second one. So we have gotten the virtual reality training system through a grant from the Department of Homeland Security. We're in the process now of talking with the state, with DPS, to deploy this asset to the, the training that cadets are receiving at the police academy. So this is something that we want to not just keep with us, but it's a good tool that we're going to bring out and we, we hope to do that with the academy. We are committed to implementing mandatory advanced trainings that, that's required and obligated to us by the state, but we want to go above and beyond that because we want to be, be good at our jobs. We're also looking at the PRC or implementing all the, the training requirements or recommendations from the, the PRC. But just as a note, our current staffing and budgetary shortfalls do present some obstacles for us to do immediate implementation for these types of trainings. We're not giving up on them. We just have to find other ways to find funding and making sure that our staffing kind of, kind of gets a little bit higher before we can move on. This is, we'd like to move a lot faster than this, but we're, we're at a point right now, at a choke point. And then as we talk about, again, the other part of that is, is the increase in the administrative lifts that we have to do for those, for those particular incidences. But in, in trying to overcome it, as we're looking for grant opportunities and trying to increase our staffing, we're looking at out-of-the-box thinking, such as like looking at a, a reserve officer program, where we might bring aboard some folks who can serve or who can work part-time for us. And that would free up officers to go to the primary training. And then in June 2022, we have several officers that are scheduled for a four-day less-than-lethal training certification. And, and again, as, as we've let folks know, advanced training options in Vermont for law enforcement are scarce. It's, it's, it's a combination of many things. And, and we're definitely not pointing fingers. It's just a, a perfect storm of what's going on. So we're trying to, again, to, to get these advanced training options and to, to strengthen our department, to strengthen the services that we provide to the city. We're going to have to go outside of the state, which is going to increase the costs of, of, you know, more from our training budget. The mental health professional funding, the update here is that the, the new budget allocates an additional $45,000. The mental health professional funding, the update here is that the, the new budget allocates an additional $45,000 for that point five position. So Washington County Mental Health Services are going to connect with members of the, the PRC to discuss where those funding priorities would probably be the most effective. Again, our position, my position is that this is something best left to the experts. We're doing these types of things. And that the Montpelier Police Department will, will continue to work with our partners. We have very strong relationships with folks. So we're going to trust their judgments here and then look at how that's going to be implemented and how we're going to best work with that. I, I really staunchly believe that mental health and law enforcement are, they have to be very, very close partners. But one cannot be embedded in the other. It's just, it's just something that's just, it's not a good, it's not a best practice. Only in certain situations when it's actually quite necessary and we don't need that, that model here, my opinion. So for street outreach capacity, the update here is that the city is continuing to work with Good Sam, all of our outreach partners on where those funding allocations are going to go and how they're going to be best used with the city, with law enforcement. And when we do mental health response models. With human trafficking, and I apologize, I hope I'm not going too fast. If I am, please let me know. So with, with human trafficking, we plan to host, we've, we've already got it on the books, training between April 4th and April 8th to talk about human trafficking, to talk about the dark web. So we are bringing in Stephanie, Stephanie Powell and another expert from the West Coast to bring this information to us. We're going to open this up to of course, our department, the state's attorney's office and other state's attorney offices throughout the state as well as law enforcement agencies across the state. There is a, a funding available that we're only going to have to cover the cost of logistics and flying these folks in. But the actual cost to, to host the actual training is going to be paid for via other means, not by the city. When we talk about data transparency, this is with our current system with, with ValCor, it's, it's hard to pull information from the system and to decipher it. It's not like new technology out nowadays that you, you set a system up and then then boom, it pops out in more accurate ways. And we don't have that particular skillset in the department and, and several of us who can do that. Our, our time again is being divided in so many different, different areas because of the staffing situation. So we're working to try to use interns. So far last year, we had our first set of two interns from Norwich University. Now we have two more. So this is going on a quarterly basis. And we're having to retrain the interns to look at the data, to pull it from ValCor, to decipher it for public consumption. But of course, there, there are obstacles again because of some capabilities with the system as well as having to retrain the interns on a constant basis. I, I prefer to incorporate new technology for this administrative lift. And that part of that administrative list or this, this new technology was a recommendation set out by the Telebait study that was commissioned by the CVPSA. So there's more to come on that. For body worn cameras, that it was, it was approved and placed on the budget. We're waiting for a decision on town meeting day and that money was $35,000. That was allotted for body worn cameras. Pending approval, we will work with vendors to make sure that they have the capability and functions that we're looking for. And then we'll go ahead and go through the, the purchasing process and move forward for the body worn camera program. The policy is already written and it's pretty much a state mandated policy that we have to work what that's been set up, set down by the, the Criminal Justice Center at the academy. I'm sorry, the Criminal Justice Council. So in, in this slide here, there was, this was the, the previous slide that I had given. There was a typo here at the front because I didn't give you the recurring costs. So the actual operational spending is updated. $35,000 was allotted for body worn cameras and within the operational budget. And that there was $130,000 for mental health and street outreach purposes. And looking over to the side and updating the numbers there, we thought it was going to be a $2,000 one-time cost to provide the training for human trafficking. That's actually three. And then right below it, as we're looking at crowd control training or crowd management training from two, that's actually going to be $3,000. To the right column, that giving updates, officer misconduct and internal affairs, that new policy was written. That policy was based on a model policy given to us by the Vermont League of Cities and Towns as well as best practice benchmark models from ICP, perf and other agencies. And, and just, and then combining it with what the, the state law is. So that policy is written. We also do have IA tracking or internal affairs tracking with through benchmark. That should be coming online. Actually, that is online now. And then as we're talking about, again, there, there is some discussion that may be required or just some approval from the city council regarding how we're doing the reporting for internal affairs investigations or complaints to the department. And looking at the street outreach capacity, it's actually going to be clear if I just say there's $65,000 that was allotted for mental health and another $65,000 for that total for, for street outreach, which is where that 130K is. And then looking at the, that final column where it says city does not support, as we're, as we're talking about, as it comes specifically to officer recruitment, what those minimum standards are. MPD has brought in a very robust hiring process that's in place. And, and that does include emotional intelligence-based vetting. And that comes from a, a program called Critical Hire in which folks who we're looking to bring on as we offer them a conditional offer of employment. One of the things in addition to an MMPI, in addition to the, the polygraph test, we asked them to take the critical hire test, which, which gives us a very good view of what their emotional intelligence level is, work ethic and things to those points. So in moving forward as we, as we look for the future, to provide updates to the council, this is where we're standing at. That again, again, we, we agree with data transparency, but this requires an ongoing discussion because of lack of, of personnel and bandwidth and, and definitely lack of money that will help us to get to this point that disinformation is at the fingertips real time to the council, to the public and to the department as well as we do our, our comp stat reporting internally. Officer misconduct and internal affairs, that's again, it's looking at the, any, any oversight that will come from the city council and the city manager and the assistant city manager. We require some context from the city council at a later date, talking about the public drinking ordinance. And then more discussions based on the policy for fair and impartial policing, looking at what those minimal standards are for, for law enforcement as we recruit. And then talking about prostitution, the legal framework. And with that, those are, that is my presentation and I stand ready for any questions or any comments or any, 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 uh, any discussion with Alyssa.
Great. Thank you. Um, yes, Alyssa, go ahead. Hi, thanks so much for the presentation and for Chief P and for the city council for bringing this back and the city for preparing for this. This is great. So nice to actually do work and then have it be followed up on instead of just like go into the abyss and no one ever talks about it again. So, so appreciate all of you in your work, moving, moving this forward. And also I do want to recognize the partnership Chief Pete and MPD had with us throughout this process. They were, they were really helpful, putting forward all this information, obviously are taking this very seriously. I think there's some really great progress that has been made here. The scenario-based training, body worn cameras, some of the youth and adolescent behavior training, having create that. The intoxication and de-escalation training with partners, you know, a lot of good things to point to. You know, and one other positive thing that's really struck me throughout this presentation and did we lose Chief Pete here? Is he still here? Oh no, there you are. Okay, great. My screen, these little faces are so small. My laptop is too small. Glad you're still here. Okay. Is that I've appreciated the most even that you are making such an effort to draw from community resources clearly instead of reinventing the wheel, like you're trying to pull the community closer and, uh, instead of going it alone. So with that, I have, I do have a couple of questions on some of the things that you put forward. And I'll do this like a couple smaller, four or five smaller questions first. And then there are a couple of bigger questions which may, we may or may not want to get into tonight, but I'll pose those last. So on the community engagement process, you know, we had wrestled with whether or not after an officer involved shooting or after a major traumatic community event, we had wrestled with rather MPD should leave that protocol process or whether the city itself should create the protocol. And so I guess I'm just interested in what your thoughts are after, you know, thinking a little bit more about that or, and in terms of, there were a couple of members of the former police review committee that were interested in that conversation. And I think we need to figure out like if you'll drive it or the city will drive it and then whatever next step is there.
I can definitely also leave that to, to Cameron and Bill who are also on as well. But our, our initial thought was that to, to provide as much information as we can, minimum information, a maximum information, minimal delay out to the public and then be, be there to answer any questions as we look at, you know, whether it's a virtual or in-person town hall to those, to those, to any type of events. But maybe not us facilitating them because there's, there's often, you know, the human response is always going to be defensiveness. And, and, and if, and if, if it's our information, our responsibility to get that information out, we want to make sure that we're, we're there in a capacity that we're serving and providing that information rather than being the primary people who is facilitating that discussion. So my, my off-the-cuff thought on this one is to have somebody from outside facilitate how this goes. And then having us there to provide that information and to answer the questions from our community.
So given that, it might make sense for the city to think about if the city wants to take on the next step here. I know Cameron had taken, was considering whether or not there should be some relationship with like a trauma-informed facilitator. So that part of the process would be if there was a major event, there was someone that was trained with the community dynamics of trauma and creating a space for healing. The police would be one constituency, a really important one there, but wouldn't be the primary one. So I just, I just offer that to the city to keep thinking about, maybe we should come back to that at some other point. But we stand at the ready to, or at least a couple of folks had from the former police review committee stand ready to continue and engage in that conversation.
And if I could bring up something real quickly before boss jumps in is Carol had also offered to be part of that discussion to part to lead those facilitations from the Community Justice Center.
Yeah, that's basically what I was going to say too. So thank you for flagging that Alyssa. We had given this some thought and realized the seriousness of it. In all honesty, this report came in in the fall, we moved right into budget. So we, we read straight to kind of focus on those things with budget impact. But knowing this was, was coming back, we, we've talked again and recognized the importance. So we have Carol from CJC has offered to be involved in this, whether they would be the lead agency to actually conduct this or just help us think it through. But we, we will be getting back to some ideas and I think having the, the, either president or former PRC involved to, to give, give us feedback on that would be really helpful.
Great. Thank you. On the youth and adolescent behavior training, I think that, that, that training sounds, you know, positive, robust and tailored. And did you say Chief Pete, that you would be recording it so people could see it on like an ongoing basis? Like you could do it annually or something or, or have it be updated to continue to use it?
For, for cost-saving purposes and because of staffing issues and, and the, the, the different shifts that folks come into work. That was our initial thought was to get as many people as we could in the room and then record it. But prevent child abuse Vermont is, is, that's, that's a no-go for them. So we're going to, they're recommending that we do it in person and reach every member of the staff.
Well, that's great. And that, that might make posals, some challenges as you look to do it in the future, you know, as well. But I, I think it's great that they're doing it and too bad you can't record that. In terms of the training around crowd management, do you have a sense if the kind of the Madison model principles that we had talked about were, were principles where we want to help people use our space and facilitate that use in the most positive experience possible? You have mentioned in the past that MPD already deploys a lot of those practices. Do you know if this training in Florida will be reinforcing that type of approach? Because there's a lot of different crowd control strategies, as I'm sure you know very well, like, and there's a real spectrum of approach there.
Yeah. So, so that's where, that's where I wanted to highlight the difference between crowd control and management. So the focus here is actually is, is based in Madison model. It's, it's how to prepare and plan to avoid situations from evolving to the point that we cannot contain them. There, till we have to get to the point that we don't have a, a, a cooperation between those who are demonstrating exercising their rights to one that's going to be more adversarial and confrontational. So, so the focus is definitely based on that Madison model of life and safety, property second. And but, but how do we get to the point that we don't even have to have that discussion?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. That's great. Thank you. In terms of the increased mental and professional, uh, mental health, professional funding, I know that the police review committee had requested 1.5 additional FTEs allocated to that. That would be a combination, a combination of social work plus peer outreach support. We see that, you know, there's a point five that was put in the budget of FTE. So one FTE total at this point and half that will be split with social worker response. And half appears to be split with the follow-up, which is critical. And we totally support that in, in a lot of our conversations. Has the peer outreach angle been lost?
No, it, it hasn't. That's part of, as we're looking at like the crisis intervention team model. Actually, Dan is part of that, the CIT steering committee. And he's advocating and, and so, so the steering committee is actually leaning on him to develop the peer support model. What we found is that there is actually no, across the board, peer support model anywhere in the state of Vermont. So this is something that's going to have to be built from scratch where we'd be more than happy to lead the way in doing that, showing and, and being that baseline for the state to work upon. So, but that's what we found. So even if, even if that, that funding were to go to peer support model, oh, you have to get volunteers, you have to get training and you have to make sure that training is certified. How is it vetted? How do you know that that's the appropriate training? And then there are other questions as what we look at as far as peer support. Are we talking turning point for like, say, alcohol and substance abuse? Or are we talking things like domestic violence peer support or schizophrenia or ski disorder, personality disorder, peer supports? So what does that look like? Which buckets and how that works? But that's not lost. That's something we're trying to build up extraordinarily quickly.
Okay. And I have three more, three more questions. So thank you so much for all of this time. You know, hopefully we'll only be doing this once every six months or something. So the on the street outreach worker, you know, that have been through Good Samaritan. I'm wondering it, you know, we have now allocated halftime FTE that was existing and a halftime FTE that is new in the city budget, as I understand it. Do you know if that position has been filled and is that position working with, you know, with folks here? Yeah.
I can jump in on that Alyssa. Actually, there's the halftime position for social worker that had already been filled, the one that we were sharing with Barry. We also have Dawn who has been the peer outreach worker that is funded by Good Samaritan and continues to be funded and is in the budget for next year. And then an additional half based on your recommendation that the chief just described. So that's total of 1.5 and so still 1.0 short of the additional recommendation that you had, which hopefully we'll get next year.
Thank you. I was trying to say the same thing. So I'm glad you clarified. My question is, has the new resource, like has the new FTE, the new Dawn, the, the new halftime Dawn been filled yet? No. Okay. But there's every intention to do it and the resources are there. It's more just, we need to do it for the halftime additional street outreach worker that is focused not on the mental health side, but on the street engagement work around like with unhoused community.
Yes. And that's based off approval from the, for the, the city budget. So once that budget goes through and the new fiscal year starts, that's when we can look at the financial. That's when we can look at giving that money to Good Sam to, to look for that position.
Okay. So the, the last two questions that I have are, one, I think like a big issue here that, that is one that both the police review committee and MPD both are interested in addressing. But you know, the update today doesn't really address it is the data transparency issue. You know, that was one of the biggest things that we heard in engaging with the public that that they want to be able to just go on the website and click and see like how many, you know, arrests have been made, what type of arrests, you know, what, you know, the traffic data and have all of that readily accessible. And you know, we had to compile a lot of that data ourselves through the process. I mean, M P D gave us like the raw data, and then we had to like create spreadsheets and tables and stuff. And so um it sounds like you have interns doing that same process now, but that really seems unsustainable to just have interns do that constantly for all of time, you know? So um and you just won't get, the public will not get that up, you know, that current data. So um you flagged it as a continuing issue, Chief Pete. And I guess I'm just wondering, like, the price tag is big to get one of these systems that give you like a real-time dashboard for police stats. Um so I I'm wondering, like, have you found any grants? Or like, what is, what a one-time investment of money um be a lot, but then an ongoing cost be a lot less? Have you have you looked into this? And uh are there any one-time funds that maybe we could use right now around COVID monies around any of this? Like, I don't know, but this seems like a need that we've both identified, and it's not being filled.
Oh, no, it's the only thing that's keeping me forward is this, the money. So I'm estimating it would to get a truly robust system that has the capability to do an A P I backdoor to pull from the system so that we're not doing it on a daily basis. Um so we have to overcome the website issues that we have with our current department or with with our current system, which is the city is is working diligently on. And then we also have to look at what the system's going to look like. The estimates, uh the estimation for something like that is probably going to be anywhere between 300 to 400,000 dollars to get this type of a system because it's also piggybacking on to the TeleVate study that talks about a true computer-rated dispatch system. So if we get a true computer-rated dispatch system, we can add things like online reporting, information that it will pull out those types of calls. It would even do something like a crime map, if you will, that you can put in an address. And then you can see uh all throughout the map what types of calls for service happen within any given date range. So it's an extraordinarily robust system. Uh the one-time cost again is between 300 to 400. And then the annual cost, you're looking at anywhere between 3,000 to 5,000 dollars a year uh to operational funding, and that's part of that new technology thing. And yes, grants, I am, I I I've been s- I'm looking for money every possibly, every possible way I can. And that's not by the wayside of me. That was that was on my to-do list as first as as soon as I got here.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this might be one of those topics that the city or the city council want to come back to, like every few months to just go like, hey, are there any resources for this yet? Because it there's there's always going to be a need for the community to see this information. Like, that's never going to go away. Eventually, we'll want to solve this problem. I know it's a big price tag, but we shouldn't forget about it. Um okay. So there's not really nothing we can do about that here. I assume no one's going to pull 300,000 dollars out of the hat, so. Uh Anne, did you have 300,000? Was that a hand up?
No, that was me being like, I wish.
Yeah, right. Um, okay. Well, the last thing for me, and Justin Dreschler is here from the Police Review Committee too. And so I just want to give him an opportunity if he had anything further. But um is on the internal affairs process that you um put forward. I think it there, I think it is much improved from um the the last process. Uh and um I think some of those particularly positive things in this new process are like the quick, the goal of having it be a 30-day investigation time, for example, that's a real, I think, a real process. And that also you will be using um, you know, third-party repository for the information. And there's a check at the city level and that the information around reports also go to the city council. Um I'm wondering, I think there's a, there's a couple of principles that may have been lost in in, you know, in translation, or maybe you consider them and and discount them. But uh you know, the city council having the opportunity, if I understand this right, to review your internal affairs reports, the council, no disrespect, may not have the um expert expertise or profile to maximize um that review process. So you know, they might not have an H R background, they might not have police experience, they might not have um legal experience. Some of the things that we flagged uh in the process, uh if if folks remember the internal affairs process, one of the aspects of that process that we were hoping to see was that there'd be like an annual audit function of a third-party committee that had expertise that would be, you know, relevant to the review. And so um I just wonder if we're missing that step here. Uh if we're missing the uh an audit function, and if we're missing an audit function by people who have that um that background, that would that would really be valuable here. Do you have thoughts on that?
Yes, so the um so what we baked into the policy and what, you know, that is the recommended policy. Um so so throughout the most important stages to make sure that we do have that, that that right is while we have to notify the H R manager, um while we have to notify the Assistant City Manager, the City Manager, while I while I'm involved in it um for the investigative and the law background. And then we also um do consultation with the state's Attorney's Office or the Attorney General's Office as as necessary. The other reporting requirement that backs up on that is that we have to report this to the um based under Act 56. I could personally, I could lose my certification if I don't adhere to that. The the chief of police loses their certification or her certification if they don't adhere to Act 56. And Act 56 is in essence everything that you're saying, that that entire process is followed and it's and it's adhered to. So that initial checklist that's in that um in that policy, um that has, there's an intake form, there's an any form, all of that has to be sent to the uh to the Criminal Justice Council that's composed of, uh I I think they're all the way up to what, 22 people now? Um and the majority of them are civilian-based board. So they do the review of of the complaint that came in, whether the department acted appropriately, whether they investigated it thoroughly, and then whether the um uh and and whether uh and looking at the disposition. So as we're looking at things like civil and criminal violations, there are outways or there are outlets for that. Um but the other outlet is you can lose certification. So even if even if for some reason the city said uh we're going to hold on to this person for X Y Z, the Criminal Justice Council can say, okay, that's great, but we're pulling that person's certification so they can't be a law enforcement officer anywhere in the state of Vermont. So there are so many checks and balances, but that primary one comes, it goes right through the state, through the the C J C.
Uh and they would give you feedback or come back to you with trends, you believe? They would come back and say like, hey, we just reviewed this complaint, we're concerned about X, Y, or Z.
So for for that uh for that trend aspect, um not necessarily. Um I I there's not necessarily a mechanism there, but there there is knowing the folks who are who are there, they would bring that up. But uh the significance also is to annually, in that policy, we have to provide an annual report to the city council. And that city counts and and the city count, and it talks about the trends. These are the majority of the complaints that we're seeing that are coming in. Here's what the administrative inquiry complaints were or the administrative inquiries we've conducted, as well as the internal affairs uh that we've conducted, so that the council will be able to look at that and see, we have concerns. All of the all of the I As that you've done, they've centered around conduct type of issues. What are you doing to fix it? But even before we even get to that point, the the program that we have Benchmark Analytics takes into effect uh everything like that. It's an early warning system as well as a is a cataloging system, uh even down to the point that staff members are putting in their weight and and they're required to update what their weight is. And so they've got it down to the science that's going to say like, look at me, I've I've gained like 20 pounds already. So if I'm putting in there, um hey, I was 189 um two months ago, and I've got three complaints leveled against me, and then the last time I did my weight check, I came in at 200. Um then then you, there's a boom, there's a red flag. You need to talk to this person, you need to reach out to Sunny for photo or or s- see what types of different things are going on. So there are so many systems that are baked into that.
Does the public, and this is my last question, and Justin doesn't have any questions, he texted me. And so I don't know if um Counselor McCullough or Hurl have any um, you know, other other pieces who were really important members of the committee as well. But my final question is, the report that goes to the city council, will that information be public?
Yes, everything that we we plan on putting that out in annual reports and updating the websites every time we we uh we pull a report like that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh Jack, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Uh thank you, Chief, for the report and uh and Alyssa for uh for the great uh discussion. Um I I know a couple of the things that we've talked about have to do with the with police department policies. And I know just in the last couple of days, we've gotten um a couple of new policies from the from the department, including the internal affairs and con- uh citizen complaint policy. And the uh Police Review Commission uh report talks about uh taking another look at the uh uh bias-free policing uh policy. And so I'm just wondering, and uh I'm not sure who has the answer to this, of what the uh relationship is between the policies adopted by the uh by the police department and the authority of the council to uh to review those policies. Because um you know, for instance, thinking about the bias-free policing policy, I know the uh city staff has said they're satisfied with the uh policy the way it's written, and they don't support a change. Um the commission said, well, you know, we think there are some uh issues where it it could be made more protective. And so how do we, how do we get at that to uh to resolve uh questions that uh that of this nature?
Well, I mean, you could, that is certainly an issue you could put on a council agenda if you wanted to discuss it. Um you know, i- I mean, there are some issues here that I think are appropriate for council follow-up, including the ones that we've kind of, you know, left there at the end. Um but that is one, in fact, the current uh policy we have was actually, I think, either adopted or run past the council um before it was enacted. And I think, you know, not not to preempt that conversation, some of the point, you you know, when we say we think it's fine the way it is, it's because it matches exactly the state law and the federal law on that issue. And um we'd be happy to talk about that further if necessary.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thank you. Lots of good um questions. Um Lauren, did I see you had a hand? Yeah.
Yeah, I did. Great. I think Stephen, you might be unmuted. It's giving me a lot of feedback. Um thanks. Um yeah, thank you, uh Chief Pete, uh for all the updates. It's really great to see, as Alyssa said, the progress and the diligence. And I know you all have been understaffed, so taking on a lot of updates and like continuing the really um speedy forward progress on all this, particularly in those conditions. Really grateful to see and the spirit of so many of the recommendations moving forward. Um and so just appreciate that. I'm really excited for, you know, keeping informed on things like the um recommendation that comes back from the team on the increased staffing for um social work and or peer support and all of that. Um I appreciate the department. I know a few of us have been able to check out the new virtual reality um headset and training tool, and it really reinforced what a challenging job you have. And I'm grateful that you all are doing it. Um and it's great to see the department just continuing to seek out grants and opportunities to be kind of as cutting-edge and and be a resource for our community and also making that available and new training opportunities and stuff uh for the region and the state. So that's that's all great to see. Um one just very minor thing, but I noticed on the side that um I think the training that you all are thinking about um hosted on human trafficking, um like the National Center on Sexual Exploitation, I'm just flagging like two. They have participated in a number of community conversations and are considered, I think, a pretty controversial group. Their background is like, if you Google them, it's like they've fought against, it's like anti-pornography, anti-comprehensive sex education. They've trying to ban certain types of literature and art. Um so if the department is getting training from them, I would at a minimum encourage hearing from other organizations that might have a very different perspective. Um so just would want to round out whatever information you're getting because I think they're viewed as a like pretty certain perspective that they would bring. Um so I wanted to note that. Um but you know, overall, again, I think just, you know, Alyssa had flagged also, um but just like the the data and transparency as one of our key things. So definitely eager to continue the conversation of how we can build that out, both for the internal affairs process, um that does look like some great improvement, and how do we um have transparency and even being able to measure is that approach working and working well for the community um as that rolls out. Um and and you know, and I am eager to take up as we get into um the coming months, um the the full suite of, you know, there's only a handful left, I think, that the P R C had put forward. Um but definitely want to at least bring all of them up to council um because the uh the committee spent so much time thinking through and uh developing those recommendations. So I want to give them all their kind of due consideration by council. But again, thanks and and thanks the team. Uh thank you the to uh the department. Please share our gratitude for all the hard work going into it. And uh thanks, Alyssa, and the uh Police Review Committee team also, who had put so much work into all these thoughtful recommendations.
Yes, I I agree. Um I want to certainly thank, if you, um Alyssa could pass on our our gratitude to the the Police Review Committee again to us, that would be great. And also, um thank you, Chief, uh for your like thoughtful uh, you know, responses to each of these. I mean, I think this is um, you know, it's an it's an ongoing, complex conversation. And uh it's it's um, I appreciate everybody's uh positivity and engagement in in all of this. Um other, I I have some thoughts about moving forward, but um I want to hear, if there's other comments from folks, I want to make sure that everybody has the opportunity um to jump in. Um just to check, Jennifer, did I, was that a hand or no? Okay. Uh all right, Connor, go ahead.
I I just wanted to piggyback on that, Mayor. I think this had potential to be like an adversarial process, but a lot of credit to the department that, you know, these are some substantive issues thrown your way. But you but you're taking them very seriously, as we're shown today. A- and on the other side, you know, Alyssa, you know, a lot of these committees will just write a report and say, hey, job well done. Um obviously, that's not where you're coming from, and you're staying on top of this. Um so I I think we have a lot of progress to make, but I I I just want to uh, you know, commend the uh the process so far. I I I think it's been re- really enlightening, and I I love the way everybody's working together here.
Yeah. Um any other thoughts um from council or the public before we discuss um how to move forward?
Steve Whitaker.
Okay, Steve, go ahead.
So I want to uh touch on a couple of points I heard. Uh I think that we should not lose sight of the potential need for a police oversight commission. I can see lots of bobbing and weaving and dancing to try to prevent that from happening. But it's important to note that this Police Review Committee did not, it was, it was very hemmed into forward-looking uh positive uh change suggestions. It was not looking at the history of abuses and malfeasance, which has to be aired and documented if you're gonna, you have to acknowledge the failures before you can move forward. You can't just dance your way around them. So uh the police contract, for instance, uh Frazier arranged that to just be moved on the on the consent agenda. That's where all the, you know, uh immunity and uh disciplinary actions are moved. That was not reviewed really by council. It wasn't open to public comment. It was pushed on the consent agenda. That's freaking outrageous, you know? Uh Act 56 is not local. We have local problems that have gone on for 30 years in my experience, and we need to deal with them locally. You can't just wrap it all in a bow and call it, you know, a statewide oversight. Uh let's see, no need to... Oh, currently, we have no need to or no process. We've got a a ghost committee formed by the contract with the police and Capital Fire that is supposedly several members of Capital Fire, the city manager, the fire chief, the pu- you know, the police chief. But this committee has never warned a meeting, has never met, has never created any minutes. And yet, we've had errors that resulted in the shooting of Mark Johnson. And yet, we've had errors that resulted in the shooting of Mark Johnson. We've had errors and resulted in thirty-minute delays for ambulances. These are not reviewed or audited or documented or explained in any way. They're all swept under the rug. And that, this is not covered in the Police Review Committee's report. I hope they're still listening. I do applaud Alyssa's stick-to-itiveness. Um, I have that uh, disease too, as you all know. The council should adopt policies. The, the police department are hired guns, literally, and they need to be held to account. And the council and the public should review and approve the, the policies, not the police department itself. Regarding the outreach work or halftime, Dawn tells me she's only paid for twelve hours a week. So you're talking she's halftime and now we're adding another halftime? So something's not adding up there. And this is again, a problem with handing the money to nonprofits who are sitting there on the homelessness task force, voting appropriations to themselves and no accountability because there's no public records law transparency. There was another person hit by uh, a local hit by walking with a walker in this, in hit and knocked down by an automobile. And it doesn't make the police report, you know, that runs in the Times-Arghus, you know? Similarly, the homeless person that was hit two years ago uh, on his way to the shelter. Green Mountain Transit left the scene, was not charged. I mean, it seems like we've got this underclass of people, yeah, just hit him, hit, hit him, knock him out of the way, and then the police will sweep it under the rug for you. That is just fricking outrageous. I've been denied access to the records of who hit Lenny in the crosswalk and why and whether they were charged. And, and it's just, you know, this is the stuff the city council should be doing if you were earning your, 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 your position. So we don't need to slow-walk this accountability on trends. We need accountability now. We need to get rid of the bad apples. We've got internal affairs is really a joke. I've reported to the new chief, on his first day on the job, he encountered a police officer who used to be the school resource officer, who blatantly lied on an affidavit to the court. And that's not been raised as internal affairs. Nobody's investigated that, you know? That same officer lied on another occasion about what state law is, about, you know, somebody in a parking lot. And the, the report from Valcourts from the, the CAD system says that there's video of the incident, but the video went missing. You know, do you smell corruption here? I mean, this is just, it's just outrageous that y'all can just turn a blind eye to all this. I mean, I'm gonna, you know, later on in the meeting, talk about having, you, you have an obligation, if you're not gonna do the due diligence yourself, you need to have an obligation to hire an attorney to validate who's telling the truth. And you will find that I've been telling you the truth for years and you've been sweeping it under the rug. So we've got problems with the CAD system having a report in it that this guy is suicidal, wants to jump off the bridge, is off his meds, and he's, and, and he's gonna hurt himself. And instead, instead of the police dispatch warning the officer, they, they did warn him that it's Mark Johnson. They didn't say, here's what happened two weeks ago. They said, nothing. And the guy put two bullets and killed him. Okay? This, this is not been resolved. The mayor, you, mayor, you swept this under the rug. You offered a public hearing, you put it number seven on the next meeting agenda and notified no one that it was gonna happen. So this is on you. So anyway, that's enough for tonight, but you understand where I'm coming from. This is a bigger problem than you're pretending. This is all not, you know, happy-go-forward. This is like, let's account for what's already happened. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so just thinking about how do we move forward um, from uh, this conversation. Um, so there are a number of items that uh, we uh, the council, I think, probably needs to um, to, uh, to address moving forward. And um, and Lauren, I know you had said like, we should be talking about all of them um, at some point. I, I don't know if you have ones that you think are um, you know, should, we should take up sooner rather than later? Um, or if uh, Alyssa, you all have opinions about which ones we should be taking up sooner rather than later? Um, I think my only um, thought about moving forward is that I think any one of the remaining topics could take up substantial time. And so I would recommend that we all need uh, generally do them sort of, you know, we, we shouldn't be planning to do them more than um, one at a time. Um, and some of these may even take up multiple meetings as we sort of have discussion and hear from people and, and whatnot. So you know, not knowing how those conversations exactly will go. Uh, so um, uh, Lauren or, or Jack, I mean, I know you're on that committee as well. Um, I'm just referencing Lauren since she was, you know, saying, yeah, we should be putting them all on. Or, or Jack, I know you, you'd mentioned like, oh, we should be talking about um, the fair and impartial policing uh, piece of this. But so anyway, I'm curious for your thoughts uh, in terms of moving forward. Um, uh, Lauren, uh, go ahead. And then, and Jack, if you want to add anything on to that, um, I'll go to you next.
Yeah, thanks. I mean, my, my preferred approach would be to um, try to follow up, uh, because the way we did it on the Police Review Committee was people were kind of spearheading the different policy recommendations. So I would want to just check in with the folks that were the leads on those sections on kind of availability to participate and be kind of available as a resource to counsel, to participate and, you know, share the, the research and thinking that had gone into it from the PRC. So you know, if we want to, you know, maybe I could plan to come back to the next meeting with a proposal based on input on people's availability and some assessment. And I could maybe work with Jack and Alyssa on this as well. Um, but looking at, you know, because I, I think some could take more or less time and we're farther or closer from maybe the um, police department's preferences, for example. So um, how does that approach sound?
I mean, just speaking for myself here, that I think makes a lot of sense, especially if there are point people um, that might want to participate. So that, uh, other thoughts on that recommendation?
I, I agree with what Lauren just said. I think uh, you know, i- it's like we do with a lot of other things. We uh, council, members of council and staff talk to uh, people who, who want to bring issues before us and, and line up a process and a, and a schedule for that to happen. And I, and I think it makes sense. And I also agree with you and that it probably makes sense to stage it over a period of time. Because we have other things that we also have to be dealing with, but...
Yeah, right. Yeah, okay. Um, other uh, thoughts, any, or any disagreements? Any, any thoughts that we should have, take on a different approach? Okay. Uh, all right, so I'm not seeing any um, disagreement there. So um, Lauren or Lauren and Jack, if you um, come up with a sort of a tentative um, outline of how you think it would make sense for us to take up those topics, um, certainly open to those suggestions. So um, so I assume we'll, we'll have, we'll, we'll bring this back up as a topic um, next time. You know, just in thinking about, I, I guess it, it makes sense to um, to bring back that calendar, so to speak, uh, to the council. And if there are items that people are really passionate about, you know, moving up or, you know, putting off indefinitely or whatever it is, um, that uh, that would be an opportunity for folks to, to express um, those things. Does that...
I'd be happy to work with the two council members on drafting something up and either getting the schedule out of an upcoming meeting or putting it in the weekly on our schedule.
That'd be great, especially, you know, coordinating with things that we already know are on the schedule. Yeah, that would be really helpful. So no, we're not trying to do like the zoning and also, you know, conversation about prostitution or something, you know, that, that would be, that would be a lot. So, okay. Um, any other thoughts on this team? Okay. All right. Well, thank you um, uh, Chief, and, and thank you, Alyssa. And um, yeah, for all, for all of your collective work on this and uh, to be continued. So yeah, we'll uh, we'll, we'll keep revisiting it. All right. Okay, so thank you. Have a good night. Um, all right, so we are uh, ready to move on to the city manager's um, review and contracts. Uh, Jack, oh, it's eight-thirty. Yes, Jack, go ahead.
I was gonna say, it's eight-thirty on the dot, time for our break.
It is, it's true. Okay, so um, I think we should take a break. Um, so we, we will be back at eight-forty and uh, yes, Phil, go ahead.
I could offer a suggestion. I think, I, I know there's at least one person, there may be two, that want to comment on this topic.
Okay.
It might be wise to take the comments. We're gonna go into executive session anyway and take the break then. I presume we're gonna go into executive session, but then not make someone hang around while we take a break just to offer comments.
That's, that seems fair. That's good. That's a good call. Uh, all right, so um, yeah, so regarding uh, city manager's uh, review and contracts, if um, if there are folks that have comments about that, now would be an okay time. Um, you can either raise your hand or unmute yourself or um, turn your video on, let us know.
Well, I think it's unfair when everybody's expecting a break to expect the uh, somebody to rush with their comments on the topic. This is very complex. This is a multi-year problem, you know?
Well, you... So you'd prefer to speak after the break? Anyone prefer to speak uh, before the break? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands. Um, that's fine. All right, uh, so let's take a break. It's eight-thirty-one, we'll be back eight, oh, eight-thirty-two, we'll be back eight-forty-two, and uh, we'll go from there. Sound all right, everybody? But we are, we are behind, right? Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six. All right, so uh, council's all back, which is great. Uh, all right, so um, we're gonna come back from our break here. And uh, so in terms of comments on the uh, city manager review and contracts, uh, Stephen, or you want to say something, then we'll discuss uh, going to, into executive session. All right, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you for accommodating that request to do it afterwards. Am I the only person commenting before you go into executive session?
Go ahead and make your comment, Steve.
Okay, so...
I don't know.
Okay, um, I've probably got five minutes here, but I, it's well researched and it's thoroughly, you, a lot of it you've heard before, but it's organized around this issue. So in considering whether or not to renew the city manager's contract, I believe it's important to review the historical record. The manager's been employed for twenty-six, twenty-eight, nearly thirty years, and it's not been all roses and chocolate cake. The position is now costing us three, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand annual, plus medical, plus dental, plus retirement, plus travel subscriptions, phone, fully loaded. In two thousand and four, an overpayment to a contractor in the amount of four hundred and sixty-two thousand occurred on this city manager's watch wasn't discovered for a couple of years. And then the funds weren't ever fully recovered. But what's worse is that the city manager, in concert with the council at the time, kept this loss a secret from the public for years. And hiding it behind some lame rationale of potentially being better able to recover more of it. That didn't happen. But from the transparency point of view, that incident alone was grounds to get rid of the city manager at that time and why he's unemployable elsewhere. We're not a home for city mismanagers. We simply can't afford it any longer. We, let's take some other examples. The multimodal transit center. The city paid three or four times too much for the car lot in its toxicity, and yet it's still not finished. There's still ADA doors that are not operable, motors with wires hanging out, locked phone charging. The project's been abandoned and yet there's, it's still not done. We have storm drains along the path that are still blocked years after the building opened. The building could have and should have been designed with showers and lockers to enable the folks that need it, and it wasn't. And there's no good reason for having not. Nor can the large buses turn around. So that's just another example of a bungled project. The connected paths, for years, for decades, we've had a planning priority for walkability about our town, and the connections of the paths are not to be interrupted. In fact, they're supposed to be enhanced and improved. Instead, we ended up with the new multimillion-dollar bridge with dangerous gaps in each end and poorly maintained bike path and no connection through to the Haney Lot with the city leases and through that lot to the bike path, which is a common thoroughfare for walkers, including the elderly pushing and pulling grocery carts now up mud and ice slopes through the Capital Plaza Lot. At one point in the design, through public records, I found out the planning showed there was a circular ramp to be attached to the rounded retaining wall to connect those three levels for handicapped accessibility. And yet it was removed, and apparently there are no public records indicating who removed it and why, with what rationale or cost justification. This is not the only example of public records disappearing. Recent requests for public records regarding the body camera proposal, which included tasers, which included evaluations. Those emails showing that taser and body cameras were loaned to the city, that agreement has not been produced is a violation of public records law, which are rampant under this city manager. Appeals to the head of the agency, under law, routinely go unanswered or incomplete. The partial responses are not in compliance with the law, which requires either certifying that the records don't exist or are exempt or production of the records. I've brought this to your attention way too many times and you've swept it under the rug. This city manager repeatedly flies in the face of that important transparency law. And now it's worse. He's corrupting our new police chief with the same behaviors. He's in effect teaching Brian that it's okay way to do business because that's the way Bill does it. The million dollars you're still trying to raise from the bond to pay off the million-dollar debt for the parking garage is still hasn't been fully taken accountability. The press is still lied to over that issue, and y'all refuse to hire an attorney to get to who's telling the truth. That's not rocket science. On top of that, the city manager was warned that the downtown core master plan should not proceed until the issue of whether the garage is gonna be built. That cost, that plan cost us more than two hundred thousand dollars, and yet it was based on the assumption that the garage would be there. I warned the council, I warned the manager that it either should be put on hold or should be designed for both scenarios. You, you proceeded with the assumed garage scenario, and now we have a wasted and useless quarter-million-dollar core master plan that will have to be redone, and yet it isn't even in the budget this year. The transit center restrooms, the city manager refuses to enforce the contract with Green Mountain Transit, requiring them to be kept open during the full business hours. Instead, he prefers to cater to the transit, to the tenant, at only a dollar a year, rather than take care of the folks who have no other place to use the bathroom. The district heat, we invested so much in the district heat system, and now we're running an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit. We had all the streets opened up, and somebody failed. I'll put it on the city manager failed to arrange to install empty conduits under the street to accommodate fiber optics to get to every building. But to have the missed opportunity to put fiber optics under the streets, and similarly to cut the conduits when fair, when consolidated, just cut many streets, is a fireable offense, in my informed opinion. Truck access, we were tearing down the M and M Redemption Center. Assurances were made to the parking for drawing board would be restored that year, as would truck access to the rear. They still have not, and now years later. The truck access through M and M to the Abishan's rear door is now creating an unsafe hazard where the trucks are blocking the travel lanes, and it's only a matter of time till somebody gets hit, injured, or killed in that scenario. These large trucks are arriving more than once a week and need to load safely for Abishans. Instead, we have them clogging up the traffic. We were repaving, somebody was repaving that alley, and we couldn't arrange to put twenty more feet of pavement down spontaneously in order to make sure the forklift didn't tip and lose the load again. I mean, again, these are all reasons we should not renew the city manager's contract. Also missing from the public records are the rights of public access to use the city garage. I talked to an attorney who grew up in Montpelier, who lived here and moved away because of the mismanagement and the high cost of taxes. And he recalls the city center being promised as a public garage, and the bathrooms being available was in the paper, recalled by many. Unfortunately, the city manager can't find those records, still refuses to say they don't exist, and refuses to respond to an appeal to the head of the agency in compliance with law. and refuses to respond to an appeal to the head of the agency in compliance with law. Instead, he would rather lie to the city council repeatedly and say he's complied with public records law. The city, not having an attorney, is ill-prepared. The council is ill-prepared to figure out who's telling the truth. But I've watched this, this manager lie to the council a dozen times at least, and he gets away with it. So also missing are public records regarding the state, the city's decision not to be a public safety answering point. Now there's money available from the state, and we need to revisit that issue, and those records have been requested, appealed, and the manager will not confirm they don't exist because he knows he's likely to get caught in another lie. I've repeatedly raised these issues. Also missing is the cruiser cam video to catch a lying police officer in the act. The Val Corres report says the video exists, and yet it's missing. He's repeatedly lied to the council on whether he complied, and whether or not the council has, anyway, I've already said that part. The silt fence, I'll skip. What's, what's worse is in the long run, the public trust and the extreme cost. Even if we were to bite the bullet and pay the contract severance, the golden parachute that's built into the contract, a hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred thousand dollars to get rid of this city manager, will still be paying for the deferred maintenance, which has only gotten more and more costly during the decades of neglect and mismanagement. The infrastructure maintenance has been routinely neglected by this city manager. While the infrastructure has been grossly neglected, appraisals have been skewed in favor of the commercial property owners, the multimillionaires, the result being that the city has been saddling the unfair tax burden on the residential properties and their rental tenants, where we are tens of millions of dollars in debt, and we will be paying for this city manager's mismanagement for decades to come. So it's time to begin this healing, this recovery, this rejuvenation of Montpelier by first finding a new city manager, one that can be trusted to tell the truth and not sweep police shootings and mismanagement under the rug, not to hide these misallocations of funds, even in the millions of dollars. The manager's charged with hiring, and yet this little city that's so proud of itself has only employed one minority out of three hundred employees. How on earth does that happen? So the city manager hires the lawyer that writes his contract, and he approves payment to the lawyer, who writes a contract that protects the benefits the city manager, for, for the city manager, more so than the people of Montpelier who pay the severance pay. At minimum, the decision on this critical and fraught decision, because I realize we don't have the support of the votes here, ought to be deferred until a subsequent special meeting, specially convened. An independent attorney should be hired to verify or debunk this short history, and maybe strip some of the golden parachute benefits out of the
You're at like ten minutes right now, and normally we, we just go with two. So if you could try to wrap it up, that would be great.
Okay, if the city manager chooses not to re-up the contract after modified by an independent attorney working for the city, not the manager, fine, he doesn't get his golden parachute. But certainly, the golden parachute provision should not be any new contract going forward, and we should be making a plan to transition the new city manager with better integrity as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicky, go ahead.
I'm trying to think of a tactful way of putting this. Having sat through many of these accusations, my mind kind of turns off after I hear the first word, "lie." It seems to me as the civility, people make mistakes. I tactfully, I don't know how to put this, other than to say that the continual vicious accusations without, without proof don't make me feel sanguine about the views expressed. I'm not part of me is doing a slow boil, and it's turning to a fast boil, and I'm trying very hard not to not to buy into some of the things that I've heard. I'm just getting really tired of hearing continuous negative things without a whole lot of positive suggestions about how things might be changed. I honestly do not believe that the city manager, the chief of police, and God only knows who all else, the mayor, the council, and everybody else, lies. I do not believe that that is true. I my lie detector is pretty good. And as far as that past contract thing that, you know, that, that mistake, I remember exactly when that happened. And I remember sitting in the, in the, in the city manager's office and discussing it with him. And there were a lot of things going on at that time that, that that were very serious, personal things going on with the then Public Works Director, and that contributed to that mistake happening to I should probably shut up while I'm still ahead. I just can't take it anymore.
Well, thank you, Vicky. And, you know, so I'll just say for, for my part, I have found the city manager to be very ethical. And, but if there's no other comments.
I will have to say that I applaud each and every one of you when you sit through that and sit through some of the things that have been said and do it with composure, because I don't think I could.
Well, thank you, Vicky. And we are gonna move on to a discussion about oh, yes, Bill, go ahead.
I'm not gonna respond to all of the things that were said. Just for the record, would note that a few years ago, the city council did, in fact, hired an attorney that worked for the council and not for the manager to review the contract, and that was done. And the contract that is currently in place is the same contract that was in place then. So the contractual piece that was requested has happened. And many of the other issues have been reviewed, and it's beneath, beneath me to go his level.
Fair enough. And Jack, go ahead.
At this point, I think it's appropriate to make a motion pursuant to one VSA Section three thirteen A three. I move that we go into executive session to consider the appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, and that we include the city manager in that executive session.
I'll second it.
Before we do that, actually, I know we've got a motion in a second, and I am feeling a little silly here. There was a suggestion that, because it, I doubt that we're gonna get to the point where we have a vote at the end of the evening, and so one possibility is that we could go through council reports now so that the public or, yeah, so that's the substantial portion of the meeting could be over. What do you, what do you think about that, team?
I suggest that that would allow work to turn off and the, the public Zoom to turn off and all of that.
So what I guess I'd recommend that we do is, you know, pending unless there's other suggestions as to how to handle this, because there's been a motion in a second. My suggestion would be that we just hang on to that. We'll do our council reports, and then we'll, we'll have a vote on that, unless folks have other thoughts as to how to handle it. Jack and then Donna, yeah?
I could move to lay my motion on the table.
Okay.
Or you can just say, well, your motion will take effect when the discussion gets done.
Yeah, that's, I, I think, I, I think we're fine to go ahead and take, take up the other matters before voting on the motion.
Okay. All right, so we are gonna do council reports first, and, oh, yes, David Delcor, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that you doubt that you'll take any action, but that doesn't sound like it's, it's certain, and if you're saying you won't take any action, then, you know, feel free and turn off the Zoom, otherwise, please leave it on.
Yeah, fair enough. Well, about that, are we going to take any action? I think it's kind of a question of like how far we get in the discussions this evening. I, I would feel comfortable saying that we are not gonna take any action coming out of this. Other, other thoughts with the anticipation that we might? Donna, go ahead.
I mean, we could just commit ourselves not to.
Yeah.
No matter what we come out with, we can say that we're gonna do it next meeting.
Yeah, that's fair. Jack, how do you feel about that? I saw you had a hand.
That's fine. I was trying to remember what, how we've managed this in, in previous years. But I don't, I don't have a problem with Donna's suggestion.
Yeah. Okay, I'm just anticipating that we'll come out of executive session and then just adjourn. So we'll, we'll just commit that to, to you all and to ourselves. Does that seem fair? Everybody just checking one more time? Okay. All right. So thank you for that question. So council reports, I'm gonna go in the order as if we were in the horseshoe, because I can't think about doing something different, apparently. Donna, as long as you're happy to go first.
I'm, I'm fine, and I'm just gonna say, I want everybody to think about voting. I want people to get absentee ballots and vote early. It really helps the process. And I do want them to support the land bond, and I want them to look beyond the immediate and look out in the future, that this is an opportunity we should say yes to. It fits in our vision, it fits in all our planning. And please reach out for more information, because it is there. Call me if you want to know more. Thank you. Oh, yeah, vote for me.
Also that. All right, thank you. Connor, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to like, thank the DPW staff with all the snowfall over the weekend there. I had a couple of constituents reach out and just say, I was in a jam, and, you know, these guys went above and beyond the call of duty, and like, you know, help me, someone elderly, it's, so just the outpouring of support, I think that they're always underappreciated, but I, I think in a snowstorm, you'll see it more than ever. Similar thanks to MPD, you know, I think we had a pretty sensitive issue on Friday there on Berry Street, and I, I really appreciate the way the department got out in front of it. You know, Jack and I went there for the virtual reality training. Chief Pete said, hey, look at the camera footage, look at the camera footage, and if we're wrong, tell us we're wrong, you know? And, and, you know, I, I think that, you know, just speaks to the character of Chief Pete there, and the character of the department, and what we like to see. So thanks so much, and, yeah, unopposed, but like, I think I'm a bit better than Mickey Mouse for the council race. Thanks very much.
Thank you. All right, Jay.
Yeah, I'll echo Donna and Connor and the folks that they called out, and supporting the, the land acquisition and Connor's feedback around, around the chief and, and DPW, and so I appreciate that. I won't, I won't be redundant there. I just will add in one, one small piece of public acknowledgement to the community effort around maintaining outdoor recreation and cross-country skiing for folks in our community. It's been, it's been a pretty you know, a new normal with lots of ups and downs with, with temperatures and snow, and we have a really dedicated group of folks who are out grooming trails all voluntarily, and that just creates this, this, just an incredible outdoor resource for folks in our community up on North Street, at, at the, you know, golf course, and in the parks. And it's, it's all, you know, it's all grassroots, community-driven, and I just wanted to acknowledge all the folks who have played a part in making that happen to support not, not just the communities, but then also all the school programs. So I just think that it's important to acknowledge that those efforts that have been having, that, that have happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer.
Thank you. I really just wanted to voice my support for the land acquisition. As somebody who's not a homeowner in Montpelier, because there are no homes to buy that I can afford, the opportunity to build affordable housing would be phenomenal, and it's a hot topic, I know, on Front Porch Forum. I'm reading the posts every day, and it's a really interesting conversation, and I would encourage folks that maybe don't have the information that they need or want, or that's accurate, to reach out to your city council person. I know we all like talking about it, and I just think it would be a very smart move, because there are no other places really to develop around here, and I have lived here for seven years, the entire time that I have lived in Montpelier, or in Vermont, sorry, has been here in, in Montpelier, and I'm raising my children here, and this is where my husband's from, and we don't want to move. I want to stay here, and yeah, that's what I have to say on that, and also, I'm running for one more year, so please vote for me. Thanks.
Right, thank you. Jack?
Thank you. Yes, a couple of things. One, I want to second what Connor said. Connor and I went over on Friday afternoon to have a demonstration of the virtual reality training setup, and it was any council members who haven't done it yet, it's pretty amazing. You really feel like you're right there in the space in which these events are happening, and you have to react very quickly, including when the guy with the weapon comes running at you, and so so I think it's, it's going to be a real real plus to the, to the training of the police, and again, we were, the chief invited us right into the room where they were watching the video of the interaction with the guy on Berry Street. It looked to me like a dangerous situation that the police reacted to very quickly and appropriately, and as we've had, been placing a real value on transparency, getting information open to members of the public as soon as we can, and it was practically in real time. Before I got to the police department at three o'clock, I had already seen the chief's post, so well done for getting the, the information out. Because I think that that does nothing but enhances trust in, in our institutions. The, the other thing, I think it's, it's very gratifying to see that there's a lot of discussion about the items on the ballot, not, not only the property, property acquisition. I've heard from some constituents. I still have one call that I need to make to get back to somebody. I, I think the the posts from the city manager have been thorough, extremely informative, and and extremely valuable. I support the proposal, and I hope our voters do, and I will put out some, some of my thoughts on the other items too, but I don't think we need to do that tonight. I think I'm set. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, Lauren.
Thank you. Just two quick things and just echo a lot of what you've all already said, um, so I won't believe her that. Um, one thing I was thinking it might be good for the lobbying committee to get together with our lobbyists. Um, so we could just check in and make sure that they have the information and context and whatever and see if there's any updates or information sharing that would be helpful to make the most of that. Um, so maybe next week or something. Oh, my cat wants to say hi. Um, and only other thing I wanted to note is I might be, I, I might be out of town for the next meeting. I'm gonna, um, try to participate, but just to get that um, on your radar in case there's anything that you would need from me ahead of time. And especially was thinking of if that's Jay's last meeting, um, and maybe we could figure out a way to, um, celebrate with Jay sometime. Um, it looks like cases are going down. Maybe we could figure out a way to thank him for his service. And it's been great working with you, but hopefully I'll be with you, uh, next meeting, but just in case, wanted to say that. And that's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Uh, okay. So.
I'll just throw in real quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would, I, I would absolutely appreciate that opportunity, but just know I'm going to be in, in the desert in Arizona, zooming into our next, to my last meeting. So it's, it's not going to be at the, after the next meeting. So let's, let's, we can look a little bit further down the road. So.
Fair enough.
I appreciate the sentiment. Thank you, Lauren. Yeah.
Um, all right. Uh, so I agree with everybody. So I'm not going to repeat things that have already been said, um, but I will also add that, um, I just want to thank Cameron, uh, for this meeting, um, in navigating, um, bombers. Um, thank you for doing that. You are a rock star. Um, yes. Uh, and so, yeah, new experiences. Okay. Now, now that's a thing apparently. And, um, we'll just need to be vigilant, I guess, about that. And so, yeah, now we know. Um, so that's one thing. Second thing is, um, I, before the pandemic hit, I don't know if anybody remembers this, but I actually started, I, I had been doing office hours, um, prior to the pandemic and then stopped due to COVID. And so I'm actually going to be bringing back some virtual office hours. This, uh, so every Sunday in February at least, uh, we're going to try that. So every Sunday, uh, 2:00 PM, if you're interested, uh, then email me and I will send you a link. And I think that should help, um, uh, with, um, uh, preventing the, you, you know, the things that happened earlier today. Um, so, uh, we'll see. Um, but anyway, so yeah, email me if, if, uh, if you're interested in participating. Happy to talk about anything related to the city. Um, uh, so yeah, that is, um, upcoming. Uh, and so on to the city clerk. So John, go ahead.
Just want to say that ballots are finally in. So we've had a fair amount of people coming in today to vote. Come on out to vote. Um, we're going to send out, we've got about 200 early ballot requests. So they should all be out by midday tomorrow. So yeah, come on and vote.
Uh, and Bill, go ahead.
I, I don't think I have anything additional than what we've already covered.
Okay. Um, Jack, go ahead.
Yes, just a question for the clerk, given the fact that it's, uh, liquor license season and we passed some liquor licenses today. Do we need to get to the police department and sign them physically?
Yeah, that's a good point. And the warrants too. They, you know, we were just filing the minutes under the previous emergency order. Uh, but the emergency order is off, so things need to get signed. I mean, I'll double check on this, but that's my understanding. So everything's waiting at the, uh, police department and boy, is there a lot to sign. Prepare yourselves.
That's good to know. Thank you for that question.
I have to ask, does that mean we should bring snacks, John?
I'm always up for snacks. Yes.
Okay, um, all right. So we have a pending, um, motion in a second regarding going into executive session, uh, that is going to include the city manager in these discussions uh, about valuation contract. Um, any further discussion on this item? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed. Okay. So, uh, and we will not be taking any action when we come back from executive session. Um, so thank you, everybody, and I will, um, see many of you anyway in executive session. So for everyone else on the call, this link will be closed. Council will be able to, uh, they'll be able to log back in, but I will no longer be recording it and it will be closed for everyone else because they're not taking action.
We'll be on a different link though, right? Yeah, just to, for others, people's, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, um, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.